Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you all to the July 18th, 2019 Forsyth County Board of Commissioners Regular Meeting and Public Hearings. This time, I'd like to call us to order at 5:04 PM. We have with us this evening Pastor, our Senior Pastor from the First Redeemer Church, Dr. Jeff Jackson, to share his pledge of allegiance and invocation and some guidance, hopefully for us all in our decision-making tonight. Please stand as you are able.
First of all, thank you for the invitation, Commissioner Brown, and thank you for the way you lead our county. Forsyth County is a wonderful place, it's a sought-after place, and it's in large part because of your leadership. So, thank you, know that we appreciate you. Let's pray together. Father in heaven, we are grateful for these leaders, the way they serve this wonderful and amazing county. Father, we are grateful for our home. It is by your hand of providence, by your graciousness, that we call Forsyth County, the state of Georgia, and these United States of America, our home. And we fully recognize that the blessings that we enjoy are not commonly shared throughout the world. You have been good to us, and Father, we are grateful for your gracious hand by which we enjoy all of those things. We pray for those who are leading us, for these men and women who lead our great county. We ask that you would continue to give them great wisdom and great insight. We ask that, as they protect our freedoms and steward our blessings, they would do so in ways that would bring about the greatest good for their wonderful people of this county. We ask that your hand of blessing be upon this time now, and may we be good stewards of all that you have entrusted to us. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, commissioners, we may have some changes to the agenda this evening. I'll start with Commissioner Levent. Do you have any changes to the agenda?
Madam Chair, I do not, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Cooper?
No, Madam Chair, I do not.
Thank you.
I do.
Commissioner Mills?
I do.
Thank you.
We have a multitude of LS storage.
I think there's three.
We have three. Public hearing number four is the first one, I think it's ZA 2320. I ask that we postpone it to 8:01.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to postpone public hearing number four, you said, to 8:01.
Uh huh.
Please vote. And that motion carries with a vote of five to zero, and we are postponed on item number, public hearing number four, to August the 1st.
And then the next LS storage is Old Business Number One, and that is to 8:01 as well.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to move that item as well, please vote. And item number, Old Business Number One, will follow along with the previously postponed item.
And then Old Business Number Two is the last trifecta of LS storage, will be also 8:01.
Also to 8:01.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, please vote. And that motion carries with a vote of five to zero, so anyone who is here to hear those items, they are being moved. Do you have any other items to consider? Commissioner Brown?
Madam Chair, I have one request to postpone Nancy Bentley, ZA 3807, District 2, till August 15th.
Where is it?
Second, say it ain't so.
Where is it in the agenda?
And I believe that's, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, Old Business Three.
Old Business Number Three, and we are taking that out to the 15th, if so chosen. We have a motion and a second, please vote.
And we're going to hear it that night, right?
That motion, whether you want to or not. The motion carries with a vote of five to zero. Any other changes from the rest of the board? Okay, I do have one as well. I am going to, I've been asked by the applicant to postpone their hearing, that, excuse me, not their hearing, their item. Let me find the number for it real quick. Uh, da-da-da-da-da-da-da. Bear with me. Yep, yes, New Business Number One E will be postponed until August the 15th, if so chosen. Motion a second, please vote. And that motion carries with a vote of five to zero. If there's nothing else from the board, is there anything from the county manager? I will make the announcement on the public hearing for the millage.
I do not, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Dave, you wanted to announce the public hearing for the millage rate?
Yes, not the public hearing per se, but...
The change to the items will be adhering this evening or adopting this evening?
Right, what we need to postpone is, what I request the board to postpone, is new item number three, which is adoption of the resolution to adopt millage rates. That resolution includes all of the millage rates for the county, including the Board of Education, and the Board of Education's rates will not be ready until Tuesday evening, so I ask that we postpone new item number three until Tuesday, the 23rd, for that work session, and that will be time-sensitive at that time.
Okay, just a question for council, I'll give it a second for consideration with a question for council. Will we want to set that as a time, an announced time event there as well, or it can just go with the flow of business?
I don't see a legal need for that. The public hearing is the more, is the concern for tonight.
Okay, thank you for the...
But Madam Chair, if I may add, though, the Board of Education is scheduled to adopt their rates at 6:30 that evening.
Okay.
So, we need to wait till after, we will hear from them.
It's a Tuesday night, but we all know we'll still be here at 6:30, is what you're saying.
That was kind of the idea, instead of a separate special call meeting, right?
Thank you for that clarification. There's a motion and a second to postpone that item, and again, that Tuesday date is July the 20th, is it second or third?
The third.
Who made the motion?
Actually, you know what, I gave him a second. I'll make that motion, would anyone like to offer a second? Thank you for that procedural change. We have a motion and a second, please vote.
Madam Chair, just a point of order on that one.
Yes, sir.
This is, in your words, I'm spitballing this, this is nothing that we have talked about with Mr. Gruen, but you know, the Board of Education has had, made us sort of reset our procedure a little bit. I might respectfully request that on that evening, that we adjourn the work session and adopt the millage at a special call.
At a special call.
I think I would just, I like the optics of us adopting the millage at a special call better than adopting it at a work session.
Okay.
Don't get me wrong, they're both perfectly legitimate areas to adopt, but I like the special call meeting better.
I agree with that. Do you want a motion to reconsider that last motion, and then make a new motion to set it to a special call work session with a directive to advertise it legally?
Yeah, if you don't mind, a motion to reconsider would be in order.
Okay, a motion to reconsider?
Second.
A motion to reconsider, and a second, please vote. It is reconsidered and changed. I would like to state a new motion that we postpone item New Business Number Three to a specially called work, specially called public hearing, or...
No, just a special call meeting.
Just a specially called meeting, there we go. At 6:30 PM on Tuesday, July 23rd, and give directions to staff and council to advertise that through the legal instrument.
Second.
The motion a second, please vote. That motion carries with a vote of five to zero.
And we may be sitting there at that special call meeting for a few minutes staring at each other while we wait for the news to come in from the Board of Education, but then we'll take that one item.
Can we please make sure they put that at the front of their agenda? Are there any other changes from county, from you guys? No?
Madam Chair, I have nothing for the...
Thank you. Anything from Tim Merritt?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, I do not have anything to change, thank you.
Tom Brown, anything from county staff? If there are no further changes, is there a motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote. And that motion carries with a vote of five to zero. All righty. As alluded to earlier, I'd like to make an announcement that we will be having a public hearing this evening at 6:00 PM, so irrespective of where we are on the agenda, at 6:00 PM we will address a special hearing on our millage rates, as is statutorily required for us to move forward with adopting them on a future vote. So, that has been, that will be done, as I said, at, excuse me, the public hearing starts at 6:00. Do we need to announce when we will take the vote, because there is a time setting here, I don't know? I don't anticipate that that would probably take a tremendous amount of time? Would it be necessary, because my red lines here do state a time for considering adoption, is that...
Yeah, Madam Chair, the 6:30 time is also an advertised time that we do, at 6:30 or thereafter, adopt the millage rates.
All right, thank you. So, I will add to that, that in addition to having the public hearing at 6:00 PM, at 6:30, we will be considering adopting the county millage rate only, and as we previously discussed, the combined total millage rate, once we've got confirmation from the school board, should occur on Tuesday evening at that special call meeting. Does that cover it? You're good?
Thank you.
All right. Pat Cartson, I think you have some milestone awards to present this evening.
Yes, that is my pleasure tonight to be able to recognize and honor two employees who have reached milestone service anniversaries with Forsyth County Government. On April 21st, Brandon Martin, with the Parks and Recreation Department, reached 25 years of service. In acknowledgement of his extensive years of service with Forsyth County, Tommy Bruce, Deputy Director of Parks and Recreation, is here to present the Milestone Service Award. Jim Pryor, the director, was unable to attend, as he is at his daughter's college orientation, but he asks that I express his congratulations to Brandon. I ask that Mr. Martin and the Board of Commissioners come to the podium at this time for the presentation, and remain for the second award. Brandon?
It's my honor to present this to Brandon, 25 years' service. Actually, we've had him 28 years, we had him three years as seasonal before he went full-time. He's seen a lot of changes in our Parks and Recreation Department, and he's helped with the growth, and I just want to tell him I appreciate all he's done. Thank you.
Congratulations. Yeah, yeah. The second recipient is Ms. Lola Cook with the Clerk of Court office, who on May 16th reached 25 years of service with Forsyth County Government. Clerk of Court Greg Allen is here to present the Milestone Service Award. Lola?
I've actually known Lola all my life, she knew me when I was in diapers, and I never thought I'd be here, giving her her award for 25 years of service at the county, and we could not do without her, she is a integral part of our office, and we do appreciate her.
Let's take a picture, Lola.
It's getting just a little bit closer. Yeah. We've had, we've had a number of these lately, and it's just, I think, a testament to what a great family we have here working for the county. All right, at this time, Karen is going to read the rules of the meeting and announce any public comment speakers we may have.
Thank you, Madam Chairman and members of the board. I'd like to take a moment to review our meeting procedures. We ask that you please silence all cell phones and electronic devices. Those who would like to speak during public comments should complete a public comment form available just outside this room. Information regarding specific requirements to address the board is listed at the podium. Please state this information prior to speaking. All comments should be directed to the entire board and not to a particular commissioner. There are two public comment opportunities during the meeting, for speakers to make a verbal presentation to the board, one now and one prior to Old Business. The number of speakers is limited to 10 now and 10 at the second portion. Speakers are selected on a first-come basis and are heard in the order in which they signed up, with the exception that Forsyth County residents are heard first. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. There are no speakers signed up for this first public comment section. If anyone wishes to address the board, please come forward at this time. I see none.
Thank you. Move on to the adoption of our minutes of previous meetings. Is there a motion to adopt the minutes of the work session and executive session of July the 9th, 2019?
Second.
If a motion and a second, please vote. Motion carries with a vote of five to zero. Is there a motion to adopt the minutes of the special call public hearing of July the 11th, 2019?
Second.
If a motion and a second, please vote. And again, it passes with a vote of five to zero. Is there a motion to adopt the minutes of the regular meeting of public hearings of July the 11th, 2019?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote. And it carries five to zero. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote. All right, I'm going to call upon Karen one more time to read the announcement regarding speakers for public hearings prior to us hearing them, please.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. For public hearings portion of the meeting, each side, those in opposition and those in support, are allotted 10 minutes to speak. Those who wish to speak should complete a public hearing form available just outside this room. Please fill out both sides and submit your form to the clerk when approaching the podium. If there is more than one speaker for each side, the available time will be divided among the speakers, and we will provide a verbal reminder when the speaker has 30 seconds remaining.
Thank you, Karen. Our first public hearing, Amy Conraths.
It's AL 190818, located in Commission District Number Two. This is a request for approval of an alcohol license for Hog Island One LLC, doing business as Ocean and Acre. Name licensee is Bradford Craig Bernardo. This is for an application to sell malt beverages, wine, and distilled spirits for consumption on their premises at 6290 Halsey On Way, Suite 620. I just want to bring to the board's attention, the application doesn't have the statement in the lease, which the rent may be based in a whole or part on the volume of alcohol sales, and you will specifically need to exempt them from this, stating Section 1.3D upon approval.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
If a motion and a second, please vote. And we're open with a vote of five to zero. If there's anyone who is here to speak in favor of this application, please come forward at this time.
Good evening, my name is Michelle Stumpy, I am the attorney for Hog Island One, and this is your applicant. Obviously, we are here in favor of this application and available to answer any questions that you may have. I did just want to mention that this company is owned by a group of individuals who own a number of other restaurants throughout the state of Georgia, they're very familiar with the alcohol laws, the licensee has been through the required training, he actually took it with me, I'm one of the certified approved training providers, and as well as all of the owners have gone through that as well. They do have responsible alcohol sales and service training for all of their servers, anybody involved in the selling of alcohol, as well as their managers, and they have not had any issues, I think I've been working with them for 14 or 15 years, and they've never had any violations or any issues at any of their other locations, which I think is now up to about 20 locations throughout the state of Georgia. So, I just wanted to give you guys a little bit of background about this entity and the people behind it.
I think you've probably saved us a lot of questions.
I did.
If there's anyone else who's here to speak in favor of this application, please come forward. If there's anyone who's here to speak in opposition, please come forward at this time. And I'm not seeing any, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
If a motion and a second, please vote. And public hearing is now closed, I'm going to turn this over to Commissioner Brown, this is in your district, you may have additional questions, I think a lot of the ones we typically ask were answered, but you may have some of your own.
Yeah, if everybody would do that up front, it'd be good, huh? So, welcome, we're really excited about Halsey On opening, I'm sure you are too, right?
You are, absolutely.
So, this training cascades down to the employees, and it's really a culture of compliance, right?
Yes, so the training that the owners and the licensee obtained was the responsible alcohol service training for, specifically for management, so it's a very high-level training. The employees get a much more point-of-sale type of training.
Right.
So, the managers understand, and they receive that training as well, but then the employee training is much more specific to actually looking at IDs and recognizing and the strategies that kids use to try and get alcohol, that kind of thing.
Well, great, thank you for that diligence. We're really looking forward to your opening and opening Halsey On, and everybody here is excited about it, I know, so.
Thank you.
With that, I'd like to make a motion, Madam Chair.
Please.
I move that we approve a request for alcohol license, sell malt beverages, beer, wine, and distilled spirits for consumption on the premises for Hog Island One LLC, doing business as Ocean and Acre, 6290 Halsey On Way, Suite 620 Alpharetta, name licensee is Bradford Craig Bernardo, AL 190818, with the exemption under Section 1.3D, which the staff needed for approval.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, please vote. And that motion carries with a vote of five to zero.
Thank you.
Go forth and prosper.
Yep.
Open up, we're ready for you.
I guess the tax is...
All right. Public hearing number two, again, Amy, I believe this is another of yours.
Yes, PW 190038, this is located in Commission District Number Two. This is a request for a pawn shop, pawn broker establishment, license for RK and Co. Luxury Lending LLC, located at 3651 Peachtree Parkway, Suite A. Name licensee is Reza Kalaj.
Thank you. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
If a motion and a second, please vote. We're now open with a vote of five to zero. You've already come forward, so I'm sure you're here in favor.
Yes, I am. My name is Reza, I'm with RK and Company Jewelers, I'm here in support.
Okay, thank you.
If I can answer any questions.
We may have some, I think we've asked a lot in past sessions, so I'll ask if there's anybody else who's here on your behalf. Is there anyone else who's here to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone who's here to speak in opposition? I'm not seeing either. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
If a motion and a second, please vote. Mr. Brown?
Yeah, I just...
Vote, vote.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And we're closed, and the questioning goes to Commissioner Brown, it's your district.
I started questioning, Madam Chair.
I know.
So, yeah, how you doing again?
I'm good.
So, just briefly, just for everyone's edification, describe the difference between your business, which you've been operating for 10 years, and a run-of-the-mill pawn shop.
So, we are actually a jewelry store, pretty high-end. In 2014 or 2015, we recognized the need to have a pawn license so that we're able to loan against things that make sense, luxury items, jewelry, watches, fine art, bullion, things of that nature. Certainly, no guns. We self-imposed restrictions on ourselves, because we're not a pawn shop, we will never loan money on tools and dishwashers and guns and things of that nature. In fact, people don't know that they're walking into a pawn shop, because we're a jewelry store, and so that's basically it. There's definitely a need in the area, and we're just filling a need, basically.
Yeah, and I just wanted to make that distinction, because they've been operating as a very good tenant there for, what, 10 years?
We actually, we've been in business for about nine years.
Nine years, yeah.
Started in 2010, moved to our new location September of last year, and been there since, and just going through the process to get this license.
I've visited the location, and I will tell you, you would not have felt, I was not, I would not have been otherwise aware, except that it was on our business, that it was a pawn operation.
Yeah, yeah.
I wouldn't have really, and even though it's clear that they sell estate jewelry, I don't think the process of it being, it's not something you would associate with a typical pawn operation. And as the conditions that came to us, I think, he speaks to the self-imposed language, I think that's been captured too, to give that assurance to the community that there's not, in the zoning conditions that came in that prior meeting, that it tried to lock that down and make sure that people were comfortable with, that was what the business model was, and that it would not evolve into a different type of operation. So, from that standpoint, we handled that through the zoning process, what we're dealing with here is just making sure that the pawn license is approved.
Exactly, that's exactly.
Second.
Yeah, we are ready for any more questions.
Would you like to make a motion?
Okay.
Yeah, well, because there were two processes, I kind of want to make sure that was heard too, because we actually did hear the zoning issue with respect to the conditional use permit, this is simply for the pawn license.
Yes, and a lot of people in the community were concerned when they heard pawn shop.
We heard.
Yeah, we saw.
I bet.
So, with that, I'd like to...
Because we are only three and a half miles away from our old location, and our base is right there, over the next six, seven days, there was actually a post on Nextdoor app saying, "The pawn shop is coming," and there were a few folks that were concerned, and then over time, our customers and people that knew us started to chime in and say, you know, it's not.
You mean people overreact and sometimes don't know facts?
Absolutely.
Oh, God.
It was, Ms. Mills, it's been very stressful. This has been, this process has given me even more gray hairs.
Would you like to be a commissioner?
I think we can put an end to that.
I can't even imagine the responsibility that you have on your hands, I really, you know, all we're trying to do is take care of these folks that come through our doors, and you know, for us, what happened was, and we understand, I mean, I wouldn't want a typical pawn shop right around the corner from me, we understand the negative connotation of the word pawn, and we're very careful not to use that word specifically, but anyway, that's behind us, and I'm here today, and I'm hoping that it will get approved.
Commissioner Brown, are you ready for a motion?
I am, I'd like to, well, thank you for your patience and your diligence, and for being a good tenant in the county, thank you.
Appreciate it, sir.
So, I'd like to move that we approve the request for pawn shop slash pawn broker establishment license for RK and Company Luxury Lending LLC, located 3651 Peachtree Parkway, Suite A, Swannie, 30024, name licensee is Reza Kalaj, PW 190038, District 2.
If a motion and a second, please vote. Do you feel the weight of the world fall off finally? It carries with a vote of five to zero.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Good luck with your new business.
It's not new, I was joking. Continued success.
All right, number three, Amy.
AL 190823, located in Commission District Number Four. This is a request for approval of an alcohol license for Novo Brewing LLC, doing business as Novo Brew Co. Name licensee is Joseph Richard Garcia, for a manufacturer brewery at their place of business, located at 6150 Georgia Highway 400, Suite A through B.
Good luck with your new business.
It's not new, I was joking. Continued success. All right, number three, Amy. AL 190823, located in Commission District Number Four. This is a request for approval of an alcohol license for NoFo Brewing LLC, doing business as NoFo Brew Co. Name licensee is Joseph Richard Garcia for a manufacturer brewery at their place of business located at 6150 Georgia Highway 400, Suite A through B.
Thank you. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
I move.
We have a motion, a second, please vote. We're open with a vote of five to zero. If there's anyone here to speak in favor of this application, please come forward.
My name is Taylor Harper. I'm the attorney for the applicant, NoFo Brewing LLC, and with me is the name licensee, Joseph Garcia. We're happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who's here to speak in favor of this application? Anyone else, anyone who's here to speak in opposition? I'm not seeing any. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I move.
Second.
A motion is second, please vote. And we're closed and I'll turn this over to Commissioner Mills. This is another one where I know we've had them before us for the approval portion, this is the licensing portion, so.
Joe helped practically write the category with our planning director or helped us put this together, but it is so important that you don't mess up on the license or get your license in jeopardy, especially your employees, because that comes back on you. You understand all that, I'm sure. I just got to make sure you do. If you get a mark against your license, it doesn't take long until all your work's in vain. So you've went through the training, your employees are going to be trained. Just make sure of that. Anybody else have any questions?
I do not.
No, I'd like to make a comment. I believe this is going to be our first brewery, if this passes, in the county.
It will be. They have, you know when you'll be open?
Yeah, we're shooting for September 26th.
That'd be great. It is. It's exciting. It's exciting.
Are you ready to make a motion, Commissioner Mills?
I am. I'll make a motion that we approve the license, the name licensee is Joseph Richard Garcia, Is there any, I don't have to have another brew, the brewery license, NoFo Brewery LLC, DBA, NoFo Brew Company, located 6150 Georgia Highway 400.
Second.
If a motion is second, please vote. That motion carries with a vote of five to zero. Congratulations.
Best of luck.
Thanks so much.
Thank you. Public hearing number four was postponed into August the 1st. We are running a bit ahead of schedule for our time-set public hearing, so I'm going to go ahead and move past that item and we'll come back to it at 6:00 PM. But we do have an opportunity for more public speakers. Karen, if you'd please remind us of the rules again and anyone who has presented themselves to speak.
If anyone would like to speak at this public comment section, please fill out a form, but Madam Chair, we have none at this time.
Thank you. All right, moving on to old business then. Our item number one was postponed also to August 1st. Item number two was as well, those are traveling together. Old Business, item number three, has been postponed to August the 15th, which brings us to New Business, number one. And I believe that that's in District Three and presenting that will be Tom Brown.
Yes, this is Conditional Use Permit 09, excuse me, Conditional Use Permit 190015, Perdessa North American Corporation, located in Commission District Number Three. The request is for a conditional use permit to operate an 8,700 square foot manufacturing, processing, and assembling facility in an existing building on 1.23 acres of property currently zoned CBD. The property is located on Parkway North Boulevard. The Planning Commission recommends approval of the issuance of this conditional use permit. The public hearing was held on June 25th. The proposed use is in conformity with the comprehensive plan and staff is supportive.
Thank you. This is not a public hearing, I'm going to hand it directly to Commissioner Brown. This is your district, or excuse, yeah, I'm sorry, it's District Three. I'm going to hand this off to Commissioner Levent. This is your district. How would you like to move on this?
Would you all mind stepping forward if you're here, Representative, please? Could you explain to us exactly what should be manufacturing there?
Yes, we will be, this is going to be an engineering, a building we're going to be used mainly for engineering, for storing spare parts that we use for our customers.
Spare parts?
Spare parts.
Okay.
And the third usage is repair rollers that are part of the machines that we supply in our pellet plants.
I think I talked to the owner today, the applicant. He said there's no need for any outside storage.
That is correct.
And if you'll see on the screen up there, I also add some operation hours, is that okay with you?
Yeah.
I just don't want it to be a 24/7 operation. You're okay with those hours?
Yeah, that's perfectly fine, yeah.
And are you open on Saturday or Sunday?
Nope.
Do you mind if I add that verbally to number two?
That's fine, yeah.
I think I'll leave Saturday a little bit different hours, but Sunday we'll just take the day off if you don't mind.
Okay, yeah.
Any other questions from anybody else?
Yeah, I'm just curious because this is actually for storage, not for manufacturing?
It's for manufacturing. I want to make sure they don't do any outside storage.
Right, but I think he was saying that it was actually, the facility was going to be used for storage of parts. Is it, is manufacturing taking place inside the facility or is it just for storing parts that are manufactured elsewhere?
Everything is stored inside.
Inside.
We don't have manufacturing, we have repair. So there are.
But the service takes place in the buildings, not just the storage. That's what I was getting at.
All the storage is inside the building.
Everything's inside. That's why number one says no outside storage.
Right, I was just trying to differentiate because when we're talking about a conditional use permit, I want to make sure that they're acquiring the proper one.
Yeah.
Because if this is an ancillary facility where they're simply doing storage, that would be a very different thing than something being used for manufacturing purposes. So I was just trying to get some clarification on that.
Yeah, basically, they're going to do storage, but also as parts were out for their customers, they'll resend them back to them.
Right.
And they will refurbish them, basically, and then send them back out.
It's not a storage facility, storage takes place in the course of doing business. I get that, that's fine.
Yeah.
The emphasis on storage was kind of a red flag.
I just don't want 18-wheelers and trucks and pallets being stored outside and turning into something that's right off of Bethelview Road.
Right.
It's not back in an industrial park.
Thanks for the clarification. Does anybody else have a question on this? Are you ready to make a motion?
Yeah, and if you'll see, the Planning Commission approved it four to one with one being absent, but they don't have any conditions, so I added these two in there and they seem to be fine with it. So I make a motion for approving CP 190015 to operate the 8,700 square foot manufacturing, processing, and assembling facility in the existing building with the conditions shown, adding onto number two that those hours will be Monday through Saturday and closed on Sunday.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, please vote. And that motion carries with a vote of five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Brown?
New Business 1B, CP 190016, Life Balance Atlanta LLC, located in Commission District Number Three. The request is for the issuance of a conditional use permit to operate a 1,150 square foot massage parlor for prenatal wellness. This is an existing building on 7.56 acres of property currently zoned CBD. The property is located on Atlanta Highway. The Planning Commission recommends approval of the issuance of this conditional use permit with a condition. The public hearing was held on June 25th. The proposed use is in conformity with the comprehensive plan and staff is supportive.
Thank you. Commissioner Levent, this is yours as well.
Is the applicant here? May I mind stepping forward? Would you please explain to the Board of Commissioners what your business will actually be and not what it says it might be?
Yes.
Thank you.
I would be glad to. I have a wellness center. I teach natural childbirth education. It's called Hypnobirthing. It's an international program and I'm a licensed massage therapist and I'm also a licensed OT here in the state. I've held a massage license as long as we've had licensure here in Georgia.
And because you have to fall under this interesting category that we have in the county called massage parlor, it's hard to say the whole thing.
The parlor part is, yeah.
But there's going to be some interesting rules they're going to follow. Have you read those, just so you don't get caught up in that?
I, the only thing that I was aware of was the, if the office would, when I leave there, that it would not carry on to the next tenant.
There's other things like, have to do with window coverings, light dimming levels and things like that, that it would be very wise to.
Read them all.
Read them all, make sure that you can comply with them all.
And some things you won't be considering, like bringing your bed to the location and things like that.
And your employees will have to be licensed with us, but anybody that's there, there could be no massages unless the state licensee is there.
Yes.
Okay.
So is this also a midwife-type op?
I don't have a midwife, no, not right now.
Okay.
No.
I don't either. I have the same one for a long time. Just kidding.
You mean mad wife.
Oh, it can be. All right, is that, you good?
I'm fine, yes.
You told everybody what you want to say?
I just ask.
I think so, unless you have any other questions.
Ms. Cooper.
I'm just curious, but tell me a little bit about what you're doing with the prenatal massage. I'm just, I find it interesting, fascinating topic, so.
Sure, well, if one of my mothers wants a massage, you know, I provide the service. I do, you know, some energy work as well, but I just want to have the opportunity to give massage if, you know, one of my customers wants, wants a massage.
But concentrating on the stress and.
Oh, yes.
And the sacrifices that we make as mothers.
As mothers, correct.
I just want to get that out there, folks. Thank you.
More of a holistic.
Yes, yeah, it's a holistic wellness center, yes.
So, and Commissioner Brown, is there any opportunity, once we get past our six-month moratorium on changing stuff, do you think she should be having to go into massage parlor or do you think we should consider something else in the future?
Well, if we feel we have a way to define her business activity and consistently apply it, we could carve out that type of business.
All right, thank you.
Ready for a motion?
I am, thank you. Make a motion for approval of the Life Balance Atlanta LLC for the CP 190016 as displayed.
Second.
If you have a motion, a second, please vote. And that motion carries with a vote of five to zero.
Thank you, congratulations.
Public hearing, or excuse me, New Business 1C, Mr. Brown?
Zoyan Application 3943, Bright Star Kids LLC.
District Three.
This is located in Commission District Number Three. It's a request to rezone 3.075 acres from A1 to CBD for an 11,720 square foot daycare center. The property is located southeast of Great Oak Lane, approximately 400 feet southwest of the intersection with Pittman Circle. The Planning Commission recommends approval of this rezoning from A1 to CBD with conditions. The public hearing was held on June 25th, 2019. The proposed use was found to be not in conformity with the comprehensive plan and staff is non-supportive.
Thank you. Commissioner Levent, this is also yours. It's District Three tonight, tonight.
Council representing this, please. If you don't mind, just go through what exactly they're looking to do and the discussions that everybody's had through this.
Sure, so this is a daycare at basically the corner of Kelly Mill in Bethelview. There's a shopping center there and currently the property has an access road. It was Pittman Road and it is now called Great Oak Lane. And there's a neighborhood behind this proposed development. And one of the big concerns that we knew even before filing was that they were going to be worried that we would be accessing their road to access the site. We've talked with county engineering and we are going to work with the county to go through an abandonment process and move the cul-de-sac so that we are not accessing the residential road.
And I think it's going to be ideal, once they get it done, it works for everybody. I had another concern with this, as I did on another daycare, when you put one near any kind of a shopping center or somebody that's already selling beer and wine, if something were to happen, does it then put them out of business? So there's some verbiage in this that keeps it from falling under the category of a school under the state rules, so that way they're not taking somebody else's land rights while they're gaining land rights.
They understand the reason for that.
They do.
And that they will not be able to expand their business model to include that later.
Yes, they do.
And this site plan is not showing the proposed cul-de-sac. This is how the cul-de-sac is today.
Is the backside of this property abut in a residential homeowner's property? What does?
There's a road that goes down, there are several homes down there.
Obviously, it's got frontage that's appropriate, but does it back on to somebody that?
I don't know, it's going to be kind of weird to show you this. So you've got your shopping center up front, Bethelview Road, Kelly Mill, and there's a road that cuts across the backside.
Right.
So right about here, there'll be a future cul-de-sac and their school's going to go here. And if we ever get to the point that they deed slant and we deed some back, whatever works out, and there'll be enough room for their outparcels, there appear to be just over 600 feet, so if anybody wanted to put something in there that sold beer, wine, and alcohol, they would be allowed to. It wouldn't interfere.
Yeah, I mean, that's the concern along the obvious commercial pathways, along either Bethelview or Kelly Mill.
It would front Bethelview.
It fronts Bethelview and it's at that intersection.
Yes.
I'm just thinking in terms of what's behind it and making sure that, if there's neighborhood back there, as long as there's proper buffering in place.
Tremendous buffering and then there's a church property to the right of them.
Okay.
Yeah, no, there's tremendous buffering.
All right. Any other questions from the board? What's your pleasure, Commissioner Levent?
And those folks apparently are pretty happy with the cold concept of not having a through street anymore.
Very good.
Make a motion to approve Star, Bright Star Kids LLC, ZA 3943, to rezon from Agricultural District One to Commercial Business District CBD on the 3.075 acres with the conditions displayed. And is there also Exhibit A? Can we scroll to Exhibit A? And with Exhibit A.
Thank you. If there's a motion, a second, please vote. That motion carries with a vote of five to zero, which brings us to New Business 1D. Tom Brown?
Zoyan Application 3936. This is the applicant, Henry Watson, located in Commission District Number Four. The request is to rezone 1.023 acres from A1 to HC to build a 1,200 square foot contractor's establishment and operate a residence for a caretaker or night watchman in an existing 944 square foot structure. The applicant's also requesting variances. The first is to reduce the side setback along the eastern property boundary from 30 feet to four. And the second is to reduce the landscape strip along the eastern property boundary adjacent to the existing structure from 10 feet to zero. The property is located on Hubbard Town Road. The Planning Commission recommends approval of this rezoning from A1 to HC with variances and conditions. The public hearing was held on June 25th. The proposed use was found to be in conformity with the comprehensive plan. Staff is supportive.
Thank you for the summary, Mr. Brown. I just was not familiar with that particular category. We don't see that come up often, the heavy commercial. Can you give us kind of a, just a briefer on how, why that was recommended for this particular application? Because I think there's some uniqueness to this application, that was the, that was why that path was chosen. I'm just not familiar, that category doesn't come up often.
Right, well, it's a category, HC stands for heavy commercial. It's a category compared to CBD, which you see quite frequently. Heavy commercial is geared toward a little less of that downtown walkability type feel. You've got a, getting closer to an industrial appearance without going full to our industrial categories. You have more allowances for open storage, open display, and a contractors-type feel. This particular one, I'm not aware of the staff recommending HC, but the applicant has requested HC. The staff found it to be in conformity with the comp plan and the Planning Commission also supported it.
Good, thank you. Good, thank you. What would, what would be some typical uses aside from this, we would see that category used for? In, instead of, say, a straight CBD or an industrial? How niche is this category?
Give me just a second, I'll walk through some of the differences.
We've got eight minutes until we have to have our next item come up, so.
All right, one example. And this, well, this is one we're currently working on in other topics. Auto, historically automobile service establishments major. They're allowed in HC, heavy commercial, but not Commercial Business District.
Okay.
Another example. There are examples of things that are more office-focused that are allowed in CBD and are not allowed in heavy commercial. So business service establishments are allowed in Commercial Business Districts, but not HC. So that's an example of something being allowed in the Commercial Business District that's not allowed there. Another example of something that, let's see, I'm looking for one. Here's one. A perfect example, contractors' establishments permitted in heavy commercial, not allowed in CBD. And I think that's probably one of the best examples we have. The contractor's establishment allows the overnight storage of vehicles. It allows some outside elements for storage of materials, and that's very much what you can envision and the kind of different, the main differences between those two categories.
Okay, and then the, what we've been presented with here in, in the red lines, it just talks about the watchman's residence component of that. Is that something that we need to make sure we call out in whatever motion we make, or is that, is that something that is intrinsic to that category?
There's a condition on.
It's a condi, okay, right.
There's a condition that addresses it.
All right, I, I see it in the conditions.
Yeah, I don't see it on your agenda as called out as being a conditional use permit. We have some categories where it requires a conditional use permit.
So it doesn't require a conditional use permit for that, in that category, it is, it's, it's a right. So we don't need to make sure that we pay special attention to that, other than there's a condition that speaks to it. It's, it's an allowable use under the category without a cup.
Yes, and I'm going to check right now and I'll interrupt you if I'm wrong in just thirty seconds or so.
All right, well, I think I've tap danced on this one long enough. Commissioner Mills, this is, this is your district.
There, they have somebody.
I'm going to educate everybody while we had a few extra minutes.
And it is, to, to, if you're looking to burn time, I'll tell you, yes, the residence for a caretaker or night watchman is permitted in heavy commercial. So you don't need to mention a cup in the approval.
Lock that one in the file for later.
All right, they had, I think when you see where it's located, it's right, I mean, it's real close to 400. It's on Hubbard Town Road. It sits right beside Yancey, where Yancey's going in, right beside like where their detention pond's going in. And it's, right across the road is where the new auto dealership's going in. But it's really what they look at is where Vertical Earth stores all their equipment. And it's not screened at all. I mean, it looks terrible. I don't know how they got away with that.
Looks like we've got some conditions that address that.
Well, not to Vertical Earth.
Well, well, at least for what we are considering here today.
So I make a motion that we, unless y'all've got any questions for, for Sean, this was, he's representing them, but this was approved. There was no one that's contacted me or spoke in opposition to it. But I recommend we approve ZA 3936 to rezone Agricultural District A1 to Heavy Commercial HC on 1.023 acres with the conditions on the screen as presented.
Becca.
We have a motion, a second, please vote. And that motion carries with a vote of five to zero. We've got about three and a half minutes here till we open our, our next public hearing. Counselor, do you want me to put this one into recess to open that public hearing, or we just hear it as a, as a line, I am in our business this evening?
The, the.
Procedurally.
The time, the time sensitive?
The 6:00 PM, yes.
Madam Chair, repeat your question to me.
Did you, is it, do we just steam along ahead with, at 6:00 PM with that item as part of this agenda? Or would you like for us to put this into recess, open a special public hearing for that as a, as a standalone? How do you want us to handle that?
We can do it standalone, that's perfectly fine.
Okay, is there a motion to recess this public, this meeting for the purposes of opening another special public hearing?
Second.
The motion is second, please vote.
Well, well, we're not recessing the meeting, we're just going into the public hearings, correct?
Yeah, you must have misunderstood. I didn't know, I did not know if you wanted that to be a standalone meeting, whereas I would just recess the meeting that is in progress, open it, we have not voted yet, and then open a new meeting for that purpose, that public, the advertised public hearing? Or do you want me to just consider it a public hearing that was kicked down from the previous?
The second one, forgive me for that.
Then, if someone would like to remove their second, I'll remove my motion.
I'll remove my second.
We've already pushed some buttons.
Well, I didn't call for the vote, so you can clear it anyway.
All right.
And, well, there we go, we wasted a couple more minutes. It's 5:58, and so we will proceed along for, in just a moment here with our 6:00 PM public hearing. Counselor, just, just to, to use our time efficiently here, we have that item scheduled for 6:00 PM. We also have a 6:30 advertised item. Do we, are you anticipating that we'll have an executive session this evening?
We are not.
Okay.
And Madam Chair, what I might recommend is we could go ahead and call the public hearing, let Mr. Gruen begin his presentation, and then by the time you open it, it will be past 6 o'clock.
Then, is there a motion to open the public hearing on the millage rate?
So moved.
Becca.
The motion is second, please vote.
Well, yeah, so what we could do is we could go ahead and call the agenda item, let Mr. Gruen begin, and then you could call the public hearing once he's finished, or open the public hearing once he's finished his presentation.
All right, is there a motion to reconsider?
So moved.
Becca.
Please vote. That item's under reconsideration. I will just hit the pause button on my own mouth for about one minute here. I'm sure a lot of people appreciate that.
We'll try again. If you're, if you're ready, Madam Chair, I'll just begin to.
Yeah, if you would like to go ahead and, and lead us into that item, and then we'll open the public hearing.
Right, I'll just do our nine-page presentation briefly tonight, and if there's any questions to expand on, I'll leave that to the board. Again, for tonight, this is the third of the three required public hearings in order to enable the Board of Commissioners to levy the millage rates for 2019 to fund the 2020 budget for several of the funds in their budget. Just briefly, again, the first slide, here we talk about the three different components, the three millage rates that the board is able to adopt that will appear separately on the property tax bills in the county. First is for the MNO, Maintenance Operations, which is generally referred to in our budget as the General Fund. And here you see some of the maintenance services that the public will recognize being funded around the county from the General Fund. Second will be the Fire District Millage Rate, which is dedicated only to the provision of fire services countywide. And the third rate will be the Bond Millage Rate, which is for the principal interest on voter-approved referendum bonds for parks and for transportation roads. And here we just show that as of right now, the preliminary budget based on these rates is balanced for the General Fund at the 149.4 million, including other revenue sources. These property taxes are just a portion of the revenues there. Next, we always show a page that describes a little bit about how the millage rates work. And just briefly, it's for each mill on the tax bill, each mill generates $1 of tax per $1,000 of taxable value. This year, the total tax digest for the entire county is up about 8.3% in total, and that includes both from new construction being added to the tax digests, as well as any increase or changes in values on non-homesteaded property. And then at the bottom, we always show the value of one mill to the General Fund is worth just over $12 million, 12.7 total, and we budget 97% at 12.3 million. And here's a reproduction of most of what was already advertised in a, in a five-year ad, showing the valuations across the five years. You can see the steady growth in the county here, both in, from new structures being added to the tax digest, as well as changes in valuation. And then pictorially, we show the same totals for the digests for the entire county. On this slide, we show history for 10 years of the millage rate for the MNO or General Fund. We see the, we had the same rates for a number of years, five years, it went, set, reduced three years ago. And then what we'll explain is the proposed increase in that rate, to be offset by reduction in another rate, is bringing it back close to where it was four years ago. And here's, I'll just take a minute to explain what is happening with the proposed rates, and then you'll be ready for the public hearing as you desires aboard. We show here the prior year rates, the top three on this slide are the ones that the Board of Commissioners levies. The bottom two are the ones that the Board of Education will levy. They will do that on their Tuesday evening meeting coming up, after which then the Commission will be able to adopt the resolution for all the rates to go on the tax bills in the county. We have the three components I mentioned earlier, including MNO, fire, and GO bonds. And I'll start with the third one. Well, before that, I'll show that the total on last year's tax bills was 7.936 mills. That total, it's important because there's changes in all three rates being proposed, but the total will still be 7.936 mills on the property tax bill for the Board of Commissioners. I'll start at the bottom. First of all, there's a significant reduction in the bond millage rate from the 1.319 mills down to 0.970. That's all that will be, should be needed to support paying off the principal and interest, since the second $100 million from the road referendum is being moved and splashed, and we've had favorable increases in the digest and reductions in our interest costs over the years. The second one in the middle is the Fire District Rate, which has been at 1.975 for, I'm thinking over, I didn't go back enough, but over 10 years. We're coming to the point now with additional stations and costs and firefighters being brought online that, that rate is, is not going to be able to sustain it for at least another year or two in the future. So we're recommending that two-tenths of the mill from the reduction in bonds, if you will, be added to the fire rate to make it 2.175 mills. By our projections, with the latest tax digest, that should be able to hold us probably up to another four years without any change in that millage rate. And then finally, the remaining 0.149 mills, we're recommending be added to the MNO rate, in particular to help with costs related to facilities coming up, both maintenance repairs and to help with some new facilities that will be needed or replacement structures. Again, in total, the three proposed rates are 4.791 for MNO, 2.175 for fire, and 0.970 for GO bonds, for same totals last year of 7.936 mills. And then lastly, we show the diagram pictorially of all the various counties around the metro Atlanta area that levy millage rates, and we compare our rate for both MNO and fire, because a lot of those are included in their MNO rate, the fire services, to do as fair a comparison as we can compared to five of our comparable counties around the region, as well as the other, both smaller and larger counties. And that our millage rates here for fire and MNO still compare very favorably, is one of the lowest in the region. And then the last slide is just the continuing calendar until the budget is projected to be adopted on October 3rd. But no budget action tonight. All that is available for the board after the public hearing is to levy the three millage rates.
Thank you for that presentation. Is there a motion to open this public hearing?
So moved.
Becca.
Motion is second, please vote, and we're open. If there are any citizens who are here this evening to speak either in favor or in opposition to the millage rate that we are considering, please come forward at this time. I'm not seeing any. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
We have a motion, a second, please vote, and we are now closed with a vote of five to zero. So we do have some additional time. Are there any questions or comments from the board that you'd like to discuss on this? We do have a bit of time before our, our time set vote on this issue. If there's not, I may ask for a brief recess.
Madam Chair, I think we could go ahead and go to New Business 4.
So we're not locked to the 6:30 timeframe? That's, that's what I was trying to clarify earlier, too, just to make sure that we're.
I apologize for not understanding.
Make sure we're compliant with all of the statutory requirements.
Go to New Business 4, he said.
Okay, let's do that then. Well, that, that is, that is the item that is before us then. Well, we will move on to item New Business number four then. And that is from Ken. I forgot we had that behind the millage.
It's the county initiative.
Yeah, that's the moratorium.
New Business, item number four.
Yeah, perfect.
Is a request that we commence a conditional use permit process with respect to parcels 239-061 and 239-051. I will tell the Commissioners that this is related to some of the condemnations that we are presently working on for the 369 interchange project. And these individuals are to be relocated from those areas that the county is condemning. And they have approached us and indicated that they have areas that they would like the county to pursue on their behalf to relocate to. Candidly, the receiving site, and there should be a photograph in your agenda book that shows the two tax parcels. I think you can see the 239061 is the larger one, and then there's 239051 that is immediately adjacent to Brown's Bridge, which does not have a number on it. But candidly, in the course and scope of reviewing these parcels, it looks like there are some cleanup, even with respect to some of the existing businesses there that also need some cleanup with respect to their land use approvals. And so candidly, what we were hoping to accomplish was to, in one fell swoop, initiate a cup that would do the cleanup, and then also initiate the cup that might allow one of the property owners that is being displaced, the business owners to be displaced, to move to this receiving site, and therefore, in the, in the same process, mitigate the burden that we're placing on that business owner by having them relocate in the first place. So this was thought from our perspective to do a lot of good and very little downside, Commissioner Mills.
And it's really just moving it out from the property, a little bit.
That's correct, that's right. So if the board can simply get comfortable initiating the process, we'll provide the background data and bring it to you for a public hearing.
So all we need is so moved?
Yes, ma'am.
So moved.
Becca.
We have a motion, a second, please vote. The motion carries with a vote of five to zero to begin that process.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We have New Business, item number five.
Madam Chair, thank you for that. And these next two items, Items Number Five and Number Six are linked, and so I will go through them in some detail, because I've got 21 minutes to do so, and, and it will take a while.
I'm sorry we're so efficient tonight.
We are, this is crazy. All right, so let me, but no, no kidding.
I know.
Let me, let me give you some detail on this. At last Thursday's meeting, that was the July 11th meeting, the issue of the District 4 moratorium was before the Board of Commissioners. As the Board of Commissioners is very aware, that moratorium had been in effect since literally April of 20, 20th of 2017. The purpose for that moratorium since its original inception was, it first started as an opportunity for there to be design standards created for some of what we call the older historic residential zonings in D4. Those were zonings that we defined as having occurred between the years 2000 and 2012. And the concern of the Board of Commissioners was that some of those residential zonings have simply sort of sat there, have languished, and were not subject to many of the more robust conditions that have been sort of the hallmark of this board, let's say, since 2012. So they were very barren residential rezonings. The notion was perhaps we can craft some residential design standards that would make the product better for the county, the district, and the citizens in the district. As that project began to take hold, it, it began to expand a little bit in scope. The notion was, well, perhaps we need to look at some design standards countywide, and so the project began to become maybe a little bit more than originally conceived. And therefore, the moratorium began to become quite a bit longer than maybe originally had been conceived. So something that was implemented in April of 2017, sure enough, we're now in, literally in June of 2019, and that moratorium is still in place. Now, because it only pertained to older residential zonings, we weren't getting a lot of pushback of, you know, let our people free, let our people free, let us go forward, but certainly there was some, right? And, and obviously, I think the Board of Commissioners does have an obligation, when it has a moratorium, to try to lift it as soon as we can, because it is an encumbrance on the ability of people to come in and to do what they want to on the property, subject to our rules. So, having said that, last Thursday, this item was on the agenda, the issue of the moratorium. One other piece of information that you need to know was that earlier in June, the Board of Commissioners had in fact approved, this was June 6th to be exact, had approved the new design standards, but specifically said they're not going to be binding and enforceable until December of 2019. All right, so those are the two pieces of information you need to know. Long moratorium, design standards were done. On July 11th, in contemplating the moratorium, the Board of Commissioners in fact decided to go ahead and terminate the District 4 moratorium altogether. And in doing that, the Board of Commissioners, however, also wanted to then say, okay, if we're going to go ahead and do away with the moratorium, we want to impose the design standards that had been the very basis for the moratorium in the first place.
standards that had been the very basis for the moratorium in the first place. I believe planning was okay with that for two reasons. Number one was because it would provide an opportunity for sort of a gradual ramp-up of getting used to these new design standards in perhaps a way that is not quite so frantic as if we had made them effective as to the entirety of the county, particularly in the districts where there's more aggressive new residential growth, maybe in districts one, two, and three. The same rationale applied to releasing them with respect to District Five. Although District Five has maybe some infill opportunities and those sorts of opportunities, it doesn't have maybe the new residential development opportunities that you see in some of the other districts. So bottom line was, last Thursday, the Board of Commissioners adopted a resolution that ended the moratorium in District Five and made the new design standards effective in districts, ended the moratorium in District Four and made the new design standards effective in districts four and five to accomplish the limited ramp-up. And otherwise, the new design standards do not come, become effective and enforceable on districts one, two, and three until December 6th of 2019. And on July 11th, you all adopted a resolution that said that. That resolution is in your book, that resolution is this agenda item. What you also said on July 11th is, is you wanted to ratify that same exact resolution this evening, and that was at my urging. So the first action I would respectfully request that you take this evening under New Business Five is to adopt the resolution in your agenda book that does in fact ratify and reapprove the exact resolution that you approved last Thursday.
So moved.
Second. The motion is second, please vote. Motion Commissioner Levent has stepped out. That motion carries with a vote of four to zero, with Commissioner Levent temporarily out of the room.
Madam Chair, I am ready for the next item, if you are.
Please bring it.
All right. Madam Chair, the next item, this is New Business Six. So this is a resolution that has been put together in the interim, and it looks somewhat like the resolution you just approved. But the resolution you just approved, we approved it again because we said we would last Thursday. This resolution is a lot like that resolution. It adds a little bit additional meat, but I want to go through this one a little more thoroughly, because this is going to be your latest and greatest board expression of will with respect to what we're doing. And I want to go ahead and say at the outset that these substantive components are going to be the same. And what I mean by that is this, it again terminates the moratorium in District Four. It also makes the new design standards effective in districts four and five. Okay, so that's going to be the same as to what you just did. But I want to go through a little bit more in this resolution. The resolution that is in front of you, that is in your agenda book, is Item Six, reaffirms the resolution approved last Thursday, July 11th. It provides a little more detail. It states that any development that is located in a district where the new standards are immediately effective, which would be, as we know, districts four and five, but are located partially in a district where the new standards are not yet effective, that will be deemed subject to the new standards. Again, this is simply us trying to make sure that if there's a development that is on the border on four and three and partially, that staff has some guidance as to whether those standards are effective or not. That's all that is. It reaffirms that the new standards are not going to be effective in districts one, two, and three until December 6th, as that was the original manifestation of the board. It modifies your June 6th direction and makes those new standards effective in districts four and five. Again, you've heard that before, because I've repeated it a couple of times this evening. It provides direction that staff does not need to publish a new UDC immediately with these new standards in there, because from a utilitarian standpoint, they really only want to publish a new manual of the UDC in December 6th when the new standards are effective. And it provides some interpretational guidance as to how the standards should be enforced and applied in districts four and five. And this is where I want to focus the board on this evening. This was not at all in the resolution that you approved for Agenda Item Five, and this language was not at all in the resolution you approved last Thursday. So this would be interpretational guidance for staff, applicable to applying the new standards in District Four and Five only, because they're not effective in one, two, and three. Okay? And here's what it says. "The new standards shall not be enforced in districts four and five as to platted lots within a partially completed phase of a major subdivision to ensure that enforcement of the new standards does not result in lots within the same phase having inconsistent architectural design elements." That is feedback we've already received, and this is attempt to provide staff some instruction that if it's in the middle of a partially completed phase, we're not going to have some structures in that phase looking one way and other structures in the same phase looking a different way. And that would apply with respect to major subdivisions.
It would be.
I also say, or it also says in this resolution, that the new standards would not be enforced as to platted lots within a partially completed phase for minor subdivisions. Same concept capturing both major and minor. Okay, that's subsection B on the last page. Then I added C as well, and this is language you've heard of before, and this is that the new standards, again in District Four and Five only, because they're not applicable yet in District One, Two, and Three, shall not be enforced against a development that is a bona fide multi-phase development that is the product of a single zoning application with a single multi-phase site plan as determined by the director, Mr. Brown, where the multi-phase development is in need of land disturbance permits to complete its final phase. I hope you remember that language, because we have looked at that before, and it's not, it's a close cousin to the language that you just adopted. But here we're talking about if a developer is in the last phase of a bona fide multi-phase development, there are concerns that they're going to have to make their last phase look completely different than the other phases in the subdivision. And so these new standards in District Four and Five would have no application to that final phase. Madam Chair, that's really it with respect to this resolution. And again, this is the resolution in your agenda book. I will only say this, and me and Mr. Brown discussed this earlier. This interpretive guidance, I just walked you through the major and minor phase and the final phase in a multi-phase development. Our vision for that is that this is interpretational guidance only as we apply these in phases four and five until December 6th. In other words, this sort of this interim period where we're like, you know, sort of giving these new standards a trial run, if you will, a ramp-up process. And I'm okay with that, I'm comfortable with that. But if you want that sort of language applicable when these become live for the entire county and get put into the Unified Development Code, if you want that to be a part of it then, my respectful request is, is that we go ahead and modify formally our UDC to put those in to the applicability section of the UDC. Do you understand what I'm saying?
I do.
If we're only using that language during this interim period between like July and December for this rollout ramp-up period, I'm okay with it just being in the resolution. But if we want these to be applicable forever, forever, under the UDC as it exists on December 6th, I think we probably ought to amend the UDC formally to include this language in it.
And that's a new and separate process that we'll undertake in the meantime.
Yes, ma'am.
Just bearing that in mind that we should be doing that between now and December 6th.
Yes, ma'am.
That's our wish.
That's correct.
Gotcha. Okay, is there, what's the pleasure of the board on this? Is there a motion?
Just, and again, Madam Chair, thank you for that. If the board is comfortable with what I went through, all that needs to be done is to approve the resolution in your agenda book.
Thank you. There's a, was a motion, a second, please vote. That motion carries with a vote of five to zero. Does anybody want to give direction at this time to staff or to legal to undertake that? Do we want to have some discussion on that as to whether or not we think that's appropriate for the general UDC? I, for one, personally think that that's, it was a valid concern, obviously, being addressed here. It's just as valid countywide. So would it make sense to give that direction at this time, or do we want to have some discussion since we've got seven more minutes?
It is common sense. I mean, it is. It is common sense.
And it should be uniform across the districts. Would you like to see us give that direction at this time? Do you want to see it in the form of a motion?
Madam Chair, I would. I'd like to have a motion just to direct staff and the county attorney to bring back some code revisions consistent with the interpretive guidance in the resolution that you just adopted.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, please vote. And that motion also carries with a vote of five to zero.
Madam Chair, I do have a point of order to give us some more time in case.
Yes.
So, and this is maybe more for the clerk, but I'll go ahead and ask. So on, is it on New Business D?
Not D.
Yeah, on New Business D, that was ZA 3936. I just want to make sure that we captured the variance in the motion.
No, I don't think, I don't think we did.
That was 1B?
It was New Business 1D.
1D.
It was Henry Watson, ZA 3936.
I didn't call out variance.
Yeah, and I don't think we even need to do a motion for reconsideration, as long as the record reflects that. Commissioner Mills, would you be comfortable-
I mean, I referred to the screen. Were they up on the screen?
I don't think they were on the screen.
But I think you may have said condition. You said as, did you say as presented? I don't remember the exact verbiage, but I-
Madam Chair, if I may, my notes reflect that the motion that was stated by Commissioner Mills stated that she approved with conditions on the screen as presented. No variances were-
Thank you. Would you like to make an amendment?
Commissioner Mills, all I would request is, is that if the Board of Commissioners could make a motion that with respect to ZA 3936, the variances as requested were in fact approved.
So moved.
Second. So motion, a second, please vote.
That's perfectly appropriate, thank you.
And that passes with five to zero as well.
Good catch, Sean.
Any other housekeeping we can take care of?
Is there anything else we can kill some time with?
Anybody want to talk about their summer vacation?
If Bubba McDonald was only here, he could sing.
Yes, ma'am, but I can't say anything.
That are clean enough for this room?
If they can actually tell, yeah. Anyone can see it.
We could take a five-minute recess, that's the best I got.
You may know where Kirk's been.
No, but we should probably send somebody for a well check.
Can we do a welfare check to see if Kirk's okay?
I mean, he hasn't been here in a while.
Is there, is there interest in supporting a motion, I'm going to move that we recess for five minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Motion, a second, please vote. We're in recess until 6:30 PM. We have a quorum in seats. I'm going to call us back to order. I'm sure Commissioner Mills is on her way back. Commissioner Levent, you want to grab a seat? It is now 6:30. I'm reconvening here to move on to our previously advertised agenda item for the county-only portion of the millage rate. I'll hand it off to Dave Gruen at this time.
If I may, thank you, ma'am chair. If I may draw the board's attention to the tab for New Business Two and your Book Two of Two for your agenda books, there's one page there with the tentatively proposed rates on it, which just could draw your attention to that when you're ready to make motions. Under guidance of council, it's recommended that we have a separate motion on each of the three rates. No need to do the total county rate, because that's a function of the other three being added together. So when the board is ready to adopt millage rates, we just ask for a motion on each of the three separate rates.
Thank you for that clarification. Would anyone like to offer a motion on the maintenance and operation portion of the millage rate, which is projected, which is set at 4.791?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion, a second, please vote. And that motion carries for the MNO portion with a vote of four to zero, with Commissioner Mills temporarily stepped out. Would anyone like to offer a motion to approve the fire district portion of the millage rate for 2020, which is set at 2.175 mills?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion, a second, please vote. Again, that carries with a vote of four to zero. Is there a motion to approve the GO bond portion of the millage rate, which is set at 0.970 mills?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion, a second, please vote. And that motion, again, carries with a vote of four to zero.
Madam Chair, I didn't see Commissioner Cooper's vote recorded on the screen.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. There you go.
Same pages, yes, you're right.
All righty. With that in mind, if there's no further business to be heard, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting?
So moved.
Becca.
We have a motion, a second, please vote. And we stand adjourned at 6:32 PM.